I was telling Jessica, thank you. She provided the pass word and we got that in to Kim and she should be on shortly. Yes, we have started Granicus.
All right. Well then, welcome everybody to the June 2nd, 2020 city council meeting. And I would like to start today. And it's bright and sunny out. We're entering into the summer months. I love that. And let us start with a roll call, please.
Hey. Councilmember Castellano. President. Councilmember Messner.
Here.
Councilmember Arroyo.
Here.
Mayor Seaman.
Here.
Councilmember Allison.
Here.
And Councilmember Pergel.
Here. Thank you.
All right, now we're moving on to our next item, which is the Pledge of Allegiance. Are we ready with our flag? There we go. Please join me getting get at this now. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. And Mr. City Attorney, Robert Black, you're here. Do we have a report out of the closed session?
Yes, Mayor, no final actions for taking a closed session.
Thank you very much. And now we're moving on to the mayor's announcements. And I don't have anything formal on my announcements today, but I do want to say that we are coming off of a very big weekend. It was what I called a listening weekend where I didn't say a whole lot, but I did a whole lot of listening. And and I did a whole lot of watching. And I do really want to commend EPD for the way they have been working with the community to try to make the most of what is a very stressful situation. We're in a very stressful time. And I heard loud and clear that this is the opportunity to move forward and do something productive with all of this energy. And and I know that swift action is always what what is what is desired, but I also feel like thoughtful and productive action is what is required. So I do promise that we will look into trying to create or opportunities to engage and work on programs or policies that will help to further the goals of folks who are have some real concerns about the way the criminal justice system works for them and how we could be better in our actions. I do also want to note that after watching the Eureka PD, both as a council member and not a council member over the past 10 years, I have seen just vast improvements and a constant desire to be better communities, community leaders. And we're not perfect. I don't think any organization is, but I think that I and my conversations with Chief Watson is that there is a desire to always be better. And so this conversation and will continue and I will be sure to reach out to people again soon. I would actually love it if there's one council member who would like to work with me on what those ideas might be that we could use to move forward and bring it back to council. Do I have one volunteer who'd like to work with me? All right, Heidi, raise your hand first and then Kim. And so Heidi and I will do it. And I don't know if two of you others want to get together and have your own ideas too when we get together and counsel and talk about them, just as long as we're not talking to each other. And I do want to make sure we bring some thought out productive ideas that make people feel like they're empowered. And in things that we do to move forward. And again, I want to thank the whole police department for really taking this seriously, for being kind and patient and listening with your whole heart. This was an opportunity for communities to really show all us. And some of them didn't do so well, but I think that I am standing pretty tall with mine. So, thank you very much. The other thing I want to mention is there's been a lot of talk, Leslie or Councilmember Castellano mentioned the other day too. There's a lot of great stuff going on with different high schools and graduates and things that communities are doing to celebrate. And so for the city of Eureka, we reached out to Eureka City Schools and I just want people to know they are looking at a graduation in July, which is out of the norm, but they're looking at possibly having a real graduation ceremony. But until then, they're still doing other things to celebrate their graduates. Look for long spine. And if you ever see a youngish person out in front of your house with a yard sign, yell at them and tell them congratulations for graduating. It's a very weird sort of year, but they did the work and they all deserve to be celebrated. So those are my two things. And while we're talking about high schoolers and graduation, this is a perfect opportunity to get reacquainted with our youth council. When we first started with them, it was a totally normal year and we were looking forward to all kinds of interesting fun things. And now I'm sure they've had to pivot just like everybody else. So tell us a bit about what your experience has been. Tristan or Christina, I don't know who wants to talk first.
All right, um, good evening, council. My name's Christina Smith of Eureka High School and Youth Council. And you probably remember me from when I presented about the abandoned vessels grant, new services division received. And this is another one of our council members, Tristan Green.
Hi, thanks for having us. I'm Tristan from VHS2. And we're gonna be talking about how shelter in place has affected youth and well, specifically teens. And after after we both give our two cents, we'll be open for questions from you guys.
Yes, um, so the shelter in place order went into effect rather swiftly. Eureka City School students at least to where on the Friday before we were out from school. Um, we did not know coming back or not. Many students did not consider even the possibility of school. So it was very sudden and they had opportunities for students to collect their work and get us situated. It took us a few weeks to get up online where we were able to continue our school education and prep for things like AP testing and things such as the dances and graduation, obviously, were postponed, canceled. And yeah, we continue with distance learning. We've been using platforms such as Zoom to host meetings with our classes to stay in touch. And it's gone fairly well for us, yes. Um, family wise, it has been interesting being a teenager during this time, especially with myself having parents who are both immunocompromised. So it would not be safe in any respect to chance what could happen. So it has been interesting personally. I will be um, moving residence to my sister so that this upcoming summer I can do volunteer work and what I need to do for the community. And um, yeah, it's been challenging, but a good opportunity to adapt and overcome to what's happening globally. And I see what work we can do as teens to help our community.
Nice, well, good work staying sheltered in place and taking care of your parents. I know it's really tough. And it's just tough. Do you know teenagers watch the least amount of TV of anybody? And this is just like if I was a teenager, it would be like, yeah, that's cool. I just watch TV all day. So Tristan, how's your experience been?
Yeah, my experience with quarantine has overall been actually pretty positive. Uh, one of the best things actually is that usually my mom is at work, but now she pretty much cooks meals for us every night. I've actually been eating pretty well. And although I have to do more chores, I have more time to do them. So that works out. Uh, I think it's also pretty, it's, you know, it's a pretty memorable event, even though 2020, I might not look back on it the most fondly. I will look back on it as a pretty interesting year. I mean, there's definitely been a lot of stuff that's happened and, you know, it's a one in a century type of event. So I mean, I like that a lot. One of the, um, for online school, online school for me, at first I really didn't like it at all. Like I didn't get the hang of it. But once I did, and I figured out how to use Google Classroom and Zoom, I actually, you know, I think I would pick, I would definitely take a normal school over online school. But for me, one of the best things about it is that, for example, usually I struggle with math. But my teacher who uploads, she doesn't do Zoom meetings. She does single YouTube videos and she's on the whiteboard and she talks about math just like she usually does, but she's filming herself. But the good thing about that is because I can fast forward, I can pause it, I can rewind, I can watch it like two to three times, which I can't do in real life. So that helps a lot, you know, if I want to like really digest some information. And basically, I mean, I like it a lot because I can do everything on my own time. I know a lot of people right now don't have a lot of freedom, myself included, but academically I've had more freedom than I've ever had because I can just like, I can take three days off, do no work, do it all on Friday. I can sleep in until 12 o'clock and, you know, I can eat, I can eat whatever I want while I'm doing my English class. So I have, you know, lots of freedom. I like that part about it a lot. One of the probably the worst part about it is although I don't get to see my family, although I get to see my family, I don't get to see my friends at all. I definitely miss them a lot. I'm really, you know, hung out with them at all. I've had to stay in my house. But um, yeah, that's pretty much my experience with it. And I also hope that I get to see my friends this summer. I, you know, like if if everything clears up and they live in Canada, so if Canada removes the travel restrictions, I'll definitely go see them.
Yeah, traveling is tough. There are a lot of people who have people they want to go see all over. Does anybody have questions for our youth council? Natalie, our councilmember Arroyo.
Yeah, I was wondering if you could speak to, I know you haven't had as many opportunities to socialize with your peers, but have you heard of youth in the community who don't have ready access to internet? Or are experiencing challenges keeping up with the the schoolwork or any of the kind of like online based social opportunities?
Uh, yes, I do. Only I have friends who do not have internet access or access to electronics. And how they've been doing that is the teachers who have been amazing and support staff have gone through, they created packets that they send home to the families. And for things such as AP testing, where you can get college credits for your classes, they have offered select school computers within the level of students able to enter exit the building so that they can go in and safely test at a secure area. So yes.
Yeah, my brother, he has internet access just like me, but he's been, he's been struggling with the online work. For some people, it works just like any form of learning, some people it doesn't. And for him, sometimes I hear like him screaming at like nine o'clock in the morning because my mom has to like force him to do the work. But yeah, and he's in seventh grade, he goes to same middle school. So, you know, it works for some people, some people it doesn't. But, you know, he's getting the work done.
Right on. What are you guys looking forward to most when you get back to regular school? Because you're not graduating this year, you'll go back next year. We don't know what regular school will look like. There's still a lot of depression. What are you looking forward to most when you're back?
I personally am looking forward to my extra career because as I said previously, our theater program and sports were on. And I'm very involved with both that are so I'm definitely looking forward to that and the structure and knowing how things play day to day.
Yeah, I'm looking forward to spending time with my friends, you know, going to their houses, hanging out, even hanging out at school, like at lunch or break together. I miss I miss some of my teachers, you know, some of them like, you know, everyone has the teachers they really like a lot that you can like talk to at lunch, you know, things like that. I miss that part about it. And uh, yeah, going outside, not wearing a mask, although I don't know, I think I, I think there's probably going to be a limited quarantine eventually, but I hope I don't have to wear a mask because it's really annoying. So I can't, I can't actually, yeah, I can't wait until the day where I don't have to wear a mask anymore.
All right. Councilmember Messner and then Councilmember Castellano.
Um, so I was curious, first of all, like how long you guys are on, when this ends, you know, the the uh, youth council. This was, uh, we were really excited to have this program and to start and you guys are kind of our first. And in the midst of that, very quickly, this all happened. And so um, it should be wrapping up. I'm, I'm thinking it's wrapping up, right? Like this is is almost over for you guys. And but I wanted to know what what you've, what if there's been something that you've gained from it and you feel like it's been good? And if there's anything that, of course, even though this is an unusual situation, if there's anything that you might say would be really helpful in the future for future youth councils as well. So just kind of curious how you guys experienced this. And I know it's super unusual, but how how there might, how you might have experienced it and what you would take away from it.
Um, so we aren't hopefully going to wrapping up soon. We're hoping to extend our program into the fall so that right now our members, the others two included, can pause and focus on home school and the other transitions going on. Um, and our staff, Sierra and Robin are working with us to see how we can resume our then. Um, since some of us are graduating seniors, but I have for sure gotten so much out of this program. And it has helped with leadership skills and our that we work on and being able to put that in front of a large group of people to our city is an incredible experience that most teens would never get. So, yeah.
Yeah, we're hoping to come back in the fall. Um, I think we probably will, but I definitely, I've gained a lot of experience from it. You're like, um, yeah, I've talked in front of, you know, large groups of people. So that's always a good thing. It, you know, prepares you for future speaking positions. I mean, this is definitely, if I were to go into politics full time, which I am thinking about for my future, this, you know, this is probably one of the best things to prepare me for that. And also just working with people, having relationships with people, making things work, having deadlines, having to go to meetings, you know, keeping a schedule.
I know. Awesome, thank you.
Councilmember Castellano.
I would be curious here, your perceptions of the future of society? If they've kind of shifted based on this or both COVID and being part of youth council, but but just, yeah, I'm, I feel like, well, I won't say what I feel, I want to hear what you feel.
Um, well, personally, I believe that as a group of youth that are coming up our generation, I feel that we are starting to get the grasp that if we want to create change in our world, we have to go out and build those positions that we want to change. So, yeah, it's important that students like us are going out and applying for these internships and getting involved with government and getting involved with politics and how we can change our society, starting from the roots over time, yeah.
The question was, um, how our world's going to change? Because of the
Your perceptions of the future of society.
Okay, um, well, I think that we'll probably be in a semi quarantine for about two years or a year. Um, I guess until vaccines made, but I actually, I think we'll, we'll be long past that by the time vaccines made. Because it, I mean, SARS is not on the level of the coronavirus, but there was never a vaccine made for that. And there's actually, you know, it's not, it's not foolproof that a vaccine will be made. A lot of viruses, you can't have them for. So I think we'll just be in a semi quarantine until around, you know, most people have got it. And the curve has been like completely flattened. And so, um, but like for the long term future of humanity, I don't think it really affects it much. I think a century from now, you know, it'll be in the textbooks, but like the coronavirus, we don't know, we don't know like a lot about it. But I don't think the coronavirus is going to affect humanity for the next century or even like the next 50 years.
Interesting, nice. That's a good question. Um, anything else, Councilmember Allison?
Oh, I just want to say, say I'm glad to hear it. Sounds like you're trying to make the best of the situation that we're all in and you're still trying to grow as humans and really appreciate your perspectives. It's very refreshing to hear your, how you're all doing. And it seems like you're just trying to make the best of everything. So that's great.
Yeah, thank you.
Again, really is nice to have a different perspective. We get to talk to our colleagues a lot. You know, those of us that have kids, which is not very many of us. Get to talk to our kids, but other than that, really understanding sort of what it's like for teenagers. That's a something we don't get to see every day. So thanks for coming to our meeting tonight. And
Yeah, hopefully come back in the fall and talk to you guys more.
I hope you will, we'll have a job for you, I'm sure. The other thing is, um, if you're interested in kind of a broader, broader reach in doing some work, California Forward is looking for a leadership program. Applications, and if you are interested in it, you could send me an email and I will send you a contact information. If you know anybody else that might be interested, California Forward does regional statewide work um, based on a triple bottom line, which is environment and economy and equity. So that's something for you to chew on if you're bored, you could give me, yeah, all right. Thank you very much, guys, and we'll move on to our next part. So you could stay and watch the meeting because you are fascinated by what's going on in the city. Why you're here. We are going to move on to public comments period. And Jessica, I believe, will be asking you if we have any, last I heard, we did not have anybody who had called in. No? So here's the thing, I know there are people out there who have opinions that they want to share with us. I am certain of it. And and so this is a different and odd way communicating. We always welcome people to let us know if they have public comments so that we can get hold of them and they can make them. And I will be working with interim city manager Powell and possibly Humboldt, Access Humboldt to talk about what are some different options we have to make these meetings more easy, make them easier for people to engage in because we don't want people to feel like they can't reach out and make a public statement. We absolutely want to hear what you have to say. And of course, you're always able to reach out to us through our other means, through email, contact us directly. Our voicemails are filling up very quickly, though. I will give you that caveat and we have to go into city hall anyways. So if it is, um, I know I need to get down there as well. Email is always good as well. So we do want to hear from you, no matter what you have to say. And hopefully you will reach out to us by the next meeting or we'll give you some different options to make that easier for everybody. And then we'll move on to public hearings, which we have none. So we will move on. Yes.
Just a sort of point of order comment, it's, there's some weird feedback. I don't know if other people are hearing that. Um, but it makes it hard to hear, sometimes the sound will cut out. So I wanted to ask that everyone who's not speaking mute. And then it looks like, I'm not sure if the council chambers connection is part of the issue or not, but um, it looks like everyone's muted, maybe we can just go forward and see if that helps.
If that helps, yeah, it looks like it stopped right now, so.
Okay.
Thank you, Natalie. And so now we're moving on to the consent calendar and we do not have anything, I don't think, that needed to be pulled. Does anybody want to pull anything? And all right, see none. Before I ask for a motion, I do believe interim city manager Powell or acting city manager Powell has some clarification for a question that somebody had about an item on.
I'm going to ask Public Works Director Brian Gerving if he could comment regarding the locations for the C-level grant, the flooding prevention item. Sorry, I don't have the name of it in front of me. Thank you.
And regarding that item, so this project is focused in the Clark Slough Drainage Basin, basically the downstream end of a good portion of the city storm drain system that kind of funnels into Washington Street. So that area between 14th, Washington, Costa, that general vicinity is where the majority of the work will be happening, as well as some upstream improvements to help reduce runoff into that basin.
All right. And Dave, that was what somebody was asking about, right? Kim? And with that answered, do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I'll make the motion to approve the consent calendar.
All right. Once a second. And can we do a roll call vote, please?
I didn't get who the second was, I'm sorry.
Oh, Heidi, Councilmember Messner.
Okay, Councilmember Castellano.
Hi.
Councilmember Messner.
Hi.
Councilmember Arroyo.
Hi.
Councilmember Allison.
Yes.
And Councilmember Pergel.
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries.
All right. So now we're going to move on to ordinances and resolutions. Item C1, CalPERS Early Retirement Service Credit Resolution and Window Period. And I believe Director Folger is here. There he is.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, yeah, as we spoke about last, at last meeting, where you adopted a resolution that included a notice of intent to adopt the resolution that is now before you as required by CalPERS in order to offer two years of service credit to the listed employees in the agenda item. Um, I do have an update on that. And it's a bit different from what you're seeing. We had one of our, those employees had decided to not take advantage of the two-year service credit. And he's going to and he's gonna remain on staff with us. Um, so the savings has changed a little bit. However, the savings that are going to be assessed within the general fund, which is where we're feeling the most strained right now, is unchanged. So, those numbers, um, the overall, uh, changes totaled to sixty-two thousand seven hundred and sixty-four dollars, bringing that, uh, total savings of three hundred and thirteen thousand five hundred and sixty-three down to two hundred and fifty thousand seven hundred and ninety-eight. So, like I said, though, the, um, the, though the overall savings won't, won't be what it was originally assessed in the agenda item, everything that is going to be, um, affecting the general fund will remain the same. So, still a worthwhile effort to offer these golden handshakes. Um, by adopting this resolution, what you're doing is setting a window period in which people, um, must retire. That window period is, um, ninety days, which is the minimum amount of time, um, that we're allowed to set. The reason for putting that ninety-day period as opposed to a hundred and eighty days is so that we can capture the most savings possible by offering this as soon as we were feasibly able to. That would make, um, starting tomorrow, the ninety-day window period would go through September first. So September first is the last day that anyone participating in the golden handshakes must retire by. Um, and after that, we'll start working directly with those employees and those employees, if they haven't already been in contact with Calpers, they'll be doing so. And then, of course, uh, my office will be touching base with Calpers to ensure that we're following all necessary protocols to offer those golden handshakes. Um, and so I will, uh, open myself up to you for any questions you may have.
Anybody have any questions? Alright, seeing then, I will ask, do we have anybody to speak on? Open it up for public comment, if anybody has anything. Do we have public comment on this item? See, then I will bring it back for comments or, uh, motions, Councilmember Messner.
I really, um, just appreciate your work on this, um, Director Folger, and appreciate the fact that this is happening. I know we are in a position right now that this is necessary for our city. And I appreciate all the employees who have, um, have made the decision to do this as well. And so, with that, I will make the motion to, um, to adopt a resolution of the City Council granting another designated period for two years of additional Calpers service credit. Is that what I say? I don't think there's anything else.
Alright, uh, Councilmember Bregel.
I'll second, and I just wanted to make a comment too. I, um, I, I just wanted to mention that I really appreciate the employees that are retiring. Gretchen has been just key in getting our zoo up and, you know, doing, up and running and doing really great things and turning it around and getting it more into, um, an opportunity for learning, not so much just caged animals, but actually an opportunity to learn about our local animals and that type of thing. So I really appreciate her and I'm really gonna miss her. Officer Goodall, he has an acquired taste and I've really, um, enjoyed getting to know him and working with him at times. Um, he's, he will be missed as well. And then Gina, um, I just, I've met you a few times, through people that work in your office, but I really appreciate the dedication that you've had to our city over all this time. All three of you have just been really, um, really important, and I just think that that's really important to say. Thanks you all.
Thank you very much. So we have a, a motion and a second discussion, looks like Heidi.
Just, just really quick, was there, um, anyone else? Cause you just mentioned those three, was the other, I mean, I'm aware of one other person, but perhaps that's the person who chose not to take it.
But, so for, that's a question to me. Um, I'm assuming, yes, so the golden handshakes were, sorry, the golden handshakes were offered to those four people and those are the ones that are outlined before you, but we do have more, um, employees, two more, who, um, did take advantage of the early retirement incentive, but it wasn't the golden handshake. Um, and if you'd like, I can, I can tell you their names, um, but that was on the agenda last time.
Okay, yeah, fine, I, yeah.
So, um, but the three names that, uh, Kim, you had, uh, spoken to, those are the ones that will be retiring. But, uh, Juan Velasco has withdrawn his name from interest for a golden handshake, will remain on staff.
Alright, so we have a motion and we have second any other discussion? Alright, do with, can we have a vote, please?
Can, uh, Councilmember Castellano.
Hi.
Councilmember Messner.
Hi.
Councilmember Arroyo.
Hi.
Councilmember Allison.
Yes.
And Councilmember Bregel.
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries.
Alright, moving on to item C2, election of municipal officers. And will that be you, acting manager Powell?
Uh, yes, it will. So this is a fairly routine item, as you know. Uh, the November third general election is to be held. And at that time, we will have two, um, seats that will be up for election in Ward Two and Ward Four. And at this time, I am requesting that you, uh, bring forward this, um, the question for municipal officers, and there's a second resolution asking the county to consolidate election services and provide the service to us. Uh, I would just like to add, for the benefit of the public, that the nomination period begins July thirteenth and runs through August seventh. And, uh, I have information available on our website under elections. And, uh, this year, the nomination packet is electronic and is available for any interested persons to review. And, and they can be prepared when they come in during the nomination period beginning July thirteenth.
Thank you very much. Does anybody have any questions? Councilmember Bregel.
Though, um, I know sometimes folks get confused about which ward is which. Is the map posted on the website as well? So people can know what ward they happen to be in?
Yes, uh, the board map is part of the nomination packet and it's also listed under the tab City Council.
Wonderful, thank you.
Any other questions? Alright, seeing then, do we have any public comment on this?
We do not.
Thank you. Um, so bringing it back, do we have any, um, comments or a motion? Councilmember Arroyo.
I move that we, um, adopt the resolution of the City Council pertaining to the general municipal election. And I believe that's all I need to make as part of motion.
I'll second that motion.
Any other discussion? Okay, are we ready, can we take a vote then?
Yes, uh, Councilmember Castellano.
Hi.
Councilmember Messner.
Hi.
Councilmember Arroyo.
Hi.
Councilmember Allison.
Yes.
And Councilmember Bregel.
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries.
And I just wanted to clarify, so there were two, um, resolutions here, but that was Natalie's encompassed everything, so we're good to go?
Yes.
I just wanted to make sure we didn't leave anything on the, on table as I'm done. Alright, moving on to item C3, this is the amendment to the City Charter, section two oh two and section two oh seven, providing for ranked choice voting recommendation. And does he may have a question, or we're gonna have a presentation about this, is this gonna be City Attorney Black or is this also gonna be you?
I believe I'm bringing this forward as these are the resolutions necessary to put the, um, question to the ballot. And at your last meeting, Council did direct staff to prepare that question and the resolutions necessary to, uh, place the question on the ballot that will amend the charter. It also consolidates the, um, election services with the county. And it sets the argument, um, uh, basically the rules of how we accept arguments for and against. It also authorizes the council to sign the argument should, um, the council choose to provide an argument in favor of, since you're putting it on the, um, ballot. And, uh, I don't, I'm not sure if, uh, City Attorney Black has anything that he would like to add. Uh, but this is really the functional part of, uh, putting a ballot measure to the voters and, uh, we'll proceed with getting these resolutions to the county.
Alrighty, so, I haven't heard from City Attorney Black, it looks like maybe he's okay with what you said. Oh, yeah?
Almost always. But, I would mention, um, the, uh, one aspect of this is that the City Attorney will prepare a written, uh, summary of the changes that are proposed and the meaning of a yes vote uh, relative to the charter amendment. So that'll be, it's a, it will be impartially stated, neither for nor against the measure, but simply describing, uh, what legal effect it will have.
Alright, thank you very much for that, uh, for that. Do we have any questions about this? Councilmember Messner.
I, yes, I do have, uh, one, one just point of clarification. Did, I was not at the meeting last, last meeting, and so I do, I would like to know if it was discussed or if it's, um, in the plan to discuss what the process for education, um, of the public will be regarding this just so that they can understand it well. Um, I just wondered if there was a plan for that and if that was already, um, discussed.
Uh, so I can answer part of that and I'm sure, uh, City Attorney Black will chime in. Uh, it, the impartial analysis, which will be part of the, um, ballot, uh, information uh, will be provided to the public. And additionally, as we do education for other ballot measures that we may have, moving forward with a sales tax measure to replace measure Q, we would include information, reference information about the difference in the charter or, excuse me, in the ballot measures between a sales tax measure and the, um, ranked choice voting. So the education would be there on what ranked choice voting means and what, um, voters would be voting for, should they choose to amend the charter to allow this.
Great, okay. Yeah, I was just mostly curious, there's just so much going on this election and it, it, it seems that there might be some really important education around it to understand it cause it does seem like a reasonable and fair system, but just to, to understand that and provide clarification.
I will add that there are a couple of local organizations who have also agreed to sort of take on, um, some education parts of this, including the League of Women Voters, who's very interested in it, so. But that is really our responsibility to make sure we follow up with them and, and see what their, um, plans are and then share those liberally, so. Do we have any other questions? Alright, seeing then, I will ask, oh, Councilmember Allison.
Oh, I just wanted to make the motion.
Okay, well, let me just make sure there's nobody, uh, who wants to make a public comment. I think we're probably gonna be back to you real soon. No public comment, okay.
Public comment, and you can just move staff recommendation, you don't have to read all of the resolution titles if you say.
Okay, that sounds good. Well, I'd like to make, uh, a motion following staff recommendation for ranked choice voting.
Alright.
I'll second it.
Alright, so we have a motion and a second, we, it looks like Councilmember Arroyo has some discussion.
I just want to make a comment, um, about, I, I, I do like the, um, inclusion of obviously the, the neutral kind of description of the impact. And, uh, I would, I would personally prefer that any arguments for or against it be, just because it is a charter amendment, my preference would be for those to be organizations like the League of Women Voters or other outside organizations, um, advocating for or against any kind of, um, charter amendment that's going to the voters, um, which isn't to say that I don't support ranked choice voting, I just, um, I would, I would be more comfortable with that personally. So I don't know, uh, that sounds like a future step, but, um, I just wanted to voice it now, since we had talked about some of the options.
Alright, do we have any other discussion about this? Alright, seeing then, I will ask for a vote.
Councilmember Castellano.
Hi.
Councilmember Messner.
Hi.
Councilmember Arroyo.
Hi.
Councilmember Allison.
Yes.
And Councilmember Bregel.
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries.
Alright, well, that, um, those were three pretty quick things to, to do, so congratulations for being efficient, guys. And we will move on, uh, reports and action items, we don't have any, so we're gonna move on to the city manager report. We do have a few items, and we're gonna start with, um, an update on uplift and covid nineteen. So, I see, I see Jeff Davis on the call, I know, uh, we also had Miles, but Miles is closed. So I'm assuming maybe you're the one that's gonna make this presentation, am I right?
Donna's here too.
Donna is here, that's right, sorry. Oh, you're muted, Donna, or you're, you're not muted, but I can't hear you. No. Now you're, now you're muted. Talk. No. Miles, do you want to talk about how awesome Donna is while she's getting ready?
I know you have. Definitely will talk about how awesome Donna is. Uh, Donna had a similar problem the other day and I, I apologize, but, uh, she's got some technical difficulties. Um, I don't know exactly what Donna was gonna say, but I, I'll just lead it off to say that, you know, uplift has really come up with a lot of new and genius and very effective programs and we're really seeing the results of those out there, um, not only, um, at Free Meal during this, uh, pandemic, but also in all the programming that they do in partnership with DHHS, Betty Chin, Brian Hall, um, St. Vinnie's, uh, Waterfront Recovery Services, um, it's just been outstanding. Um, it's been led by Donna and, uh, Jeff Davis with the help of Caitlin, um, who we call Mo, as well as Brandy and all of our other employees that work in the uplift program. So, um, with that, um, hopefully Donna can come in, cause I know she really wanted to say something, but, um, Jeff will take it over and give you guys an update about what we've been doing currently. And, um, I, I will say that we will be coming back with, uh, another presentation on the overall program and the first meeting in July as well. But, um, Jeff, you can take it away, Mr. Davis.
Excellent, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, is, is my microphone working?
It is perfect.
Alright, excellent. Oh, so, uh, I'm here to present tonight about the, uh, uplift eureka and a little bit of an update that and, and the response to, uh, to covid nineteen. So, uh, due to health and safety concerns surrounding, uh, the outbreak, uh, this outbreak of, of covid, we've had to temporarily suspend some of our programming. Uh, we had to, uh, suspend the pathway to payday at this point, it's just not safe having about forty people in, in one room, um, and, and breaking up into those groups. So we've suspended that for, for now, and our job skills training program also, uh, similar concerns, we had to temporarily, uh, suspend that program. But we are actually in the process of, of, of bringing that, um, partially re-implementing that. Uh, we are gonna still hold off on the classroom and, and, uh, transporting folks in, in, uh, in, in the van, but we are, we just submitted a reopening plan with the county to get the, our beautification team out in the community, out into Old Town, out, all, all over the place, uh, cleaning up and, and maybe removing graffiti and, and, uh, everything else that, that we usually do. So steps are being take, uh, taken to, to re-implement that. Um, some of our, our co-pilot, uh, uh, program had to be temporarily, uh, suspended just due to, um, concerns about face-to-face meetings and, and those sort of interactions. But we do, um, have, have a, a great team, as, as Miles had, had mentioned. Uh, Mo, uh, Caitlin, uh, Merrill has, has been working on, uh, all the different safety protocols that need to be put into place to bring some of these back. Mo, Caitlin Merrill has, has been working on all the different safety protocols that need to be put into place to bring some of these back. She's been behind the scenes, working on, on some grants and a lot of other policy and procedures. I can't thank her enough for, for that. And so we have shifted a lot of our, our energy and a lot of our efforts to supporting some of our community partners during this time. We are down at St. Vincent de Paul during Free Meal. Every day of the week, we have at least two or three folks down there helping assisting with, with meal service, ensuring that folks are out there with all the update, up-to-date information, accurate information, and that we are, there's a lot of different needs that, that we are addressing down there. I think one of the first things that we identified was the need for, for hand sanitizer. There was a limited amount of, of opportunities there for, for hand washing. And, and once folks leave that area, there really were real limited numbers of, of locations to, for folks to wash their hands. So we were able to obtain over ten gallons of hand sanitizer and over two hundred and fifty small, I think they're about three, two ounce bottles, and we have distributed all of those. We have some of the hand sanitizer left to, to refill those, and that's been a great success down there. And then one of the, one of the policies that St. Vincent de Paul had implemented was that folks would not be served food unless they were wearing face coverings due to, due to health concerns. A lot of folks down there weren't, didn't have access to those, so we started a mask donation program. And, and the community was, responded generously. We've received over eleven hundred masks and face coverings that we have distributed to the, the Eureka Rescue Mission. And then we were down on a daily basis at, at St. Vincent de Paul handing those out. We are handing out one, one per person. And we're also accepting the used or dirty masks that we are, have a system in place to take those down to a laundromat, get those laundered per CDC guidelines and, and reuse those. It's been a huge success, and not just because we're handing out hand sanitizers and because we are handing out masks. It makes a huge impact that really it was, it was surprising to me how, how some of these folks reacted about how they were just so, so impressed and so grateful that, that, not just for the mask and the hand sanitizer, but that, that these community members actually care about, about their well-being and were concerned about their safety enough to donate so many masks. And, and a lot of these are really high-quality masks. People spend a lot of time sewing, sewing these up and, and sending, donating those to us. And, and we were also doing a lot of outreach down there. And I kinda wanna give a huge shout out to, to our, our team members. Brandy Wheeler and Sarah Cooper have been down there. They've been down there, between the two of them, every single day overseeing the, the mask program, distributing the masks, returning those, and then making sure that they're, they're laundered, and we have all the, the safety precautions in, in place, so there's no cross-contamination. We have our outreach workers, Robert Williams and Larry Alexander are out in the field. And they are working closely with our, with other community partners such as Department of Health and Human Services. And especially right now where the Bayview is, has its opening. And some of the caseworkers weren't able to track down where some of these folks were, and, and our outreach workers actually knew where they were. They went out in the field. Just today, we were able to, to sign all the, all the lease paperwork for, for one of those folks and, and help get them into Bayview. And we also have MJ Diaz, who is another, one of our uplift team members, who was down at, at Free Meal five days a week, helping, doing outreach, making some, some really wonderful things happen. And Ethan Nazzadi, our, our housing support specialist, has, has been down there. I think he's out there about three days a week. And he's doing quite a bit, a lot of outreach where we bring an iPad down there and help folks, whether it's, it's signing up for, you know, looking for jobs, whether it's, you know, the stimulus checks that are kind of floating around. So we're, we're down there with, with, you know, with that ability. And then also just updating folks of what, what's going on and making sure that they're well-informed and, and have, have that, have that information presented to them. And we have, have been down there for, for quite a while, but not as, as long as, as the CSET team has been. And I just wanna give them a huge shout out too. They've been huge, huge community partners with us down there. I mean, they're kind of our sibling unit and Sergeant LaFrance and, and all, all the CSET members of, of that team have just really just got above and beyond. And it's, it's just, it's a really great collaboration down there, and I just can't thank them enough for, for all of their efforts. And then also, what we're down there with, the Department of Health and Human Services, their, their home team. We work with them down at St. Vincent de Paul, and, and it's been a, a great collaboration there. And then we've been, we've been busy doing a lot of different things. We are pretty active right now, housing, community members experiencing homelessness. Last week, last, as of last Sunday, we, we had, we had housed two folks in, in the housing. So that was, that was it for the month of, of May, but I can't wait to, for our next month, presentation, because I'm gonna have much higher numbers. I think by the end of the week, we'll have another two people in the housing, and then there's about three others that are really close. So during this next presentation, I'm gonna have some, some really great numbers for, for, for our, our housing program. And it's just not, the, the numbers aren't, aren't the only thing there. These are, these are folks that are, community members that are out in, in the, the community that really, this really is a life-changing event for, for a lot of them. And it's just a, a team effort all the way around, so we are continuing with, with, with that. We had to take a kind of pause temporarily to make sure that we had all of our safety measures in place and safety protocols to, to make sure that we can kind of continue doing these things during this pandemic in, in a safe manner. So I just, yeah, once, once again, thanks. I want a huge shout out. I hope, I hope they're all watching. The, the uplift team, it's, it's an amazing team, and, and I couldn't be prouder of them and all the outstanding work that they're doing for this community. Our mask donation program is still happening. It's down at, at City Hall. We leave every day from eight-thirty until four o'clock. There's a band outside except between noon and one, where there's a lunch break. And so we're still, we are still accepting donations there, and these are going to folks that, that really do need them. And we're getting multiple use out of, out of each mask, and, and we're offering that, that service to, to our community members. Yeah, it's just been, been challenging times, but our, our team has really stepped up to meet those challenges. And this is kind of a sneak peek at, at next month's presentation. We're, we're in the works of, of doing some interviews and gathering some, some great stories. And that's another thing that, that we have really tried to, to, to increase is, is kind of our presence out in social media and out in, in, you know, Facebook and, and the city webpage. We're gonna really start sharing more of these success stories with, with, with everyone, with, with the world, all, all the hard work that we're doing. It's, it's happening every day, and we're gonna be starting, we're gonna start sharing more of those, to kind of put out the, just draw, you know, bring attention to all, all the great work that we're doing. And, and really the, this, this community as a whole, kind of gathering, teaming up and, and, and really supporting those, those folks who, who need it the most, that are the most vulnerable. Yeah, that's, we've been, we've been pretty busy, and I'm, I'm definitely available if there's any, for any questions. I think Miles is laughing at me, but I'm pretty sure I covered everything I was supposed to cover.
Well, let's add, actually Donna is here, and I have so much faith that it's just gonna work now. Oh, no. I hate that it doesn't work.
And so one person I didn't mention was Deputy Director Donna Wood. She has been a phenomenal lead in, in this program. And she, with her guidance and expertise, really, no, she really has been, been huge in, in guiding this team. And, and I just can't thank her enough for, for her guidance and support.
You guys are all a fantastic team, and even though we can't hear from her, look at her smiley face. We know she loves what she does. Does anybody have questions for, for any of them? Because Donna can always answer in chat, I suppose. We have something specifically for her. Do we have any questions? Heidi?
Since it's a report, I think we can just respond, right?
So, that's right, you can.
I just, I am so proud of the uplift team and, and, I mean, just our community and what's been happening. And thank you for the amazing and really good report. And I know, Jeff, you said that, you know, it's only been two and, and kind of hoping to get more. But each one of the individuals who are housed, it's not just housing. There's so much other stuff that goes into it. And so I wanna just mention that, that it's, it's a lot more than just getting them housed. There's so much more you're putting into it and helping them so that they can live successfully housed. And the amount of time and energy and really encouragement that it takes to move people through this process. And you guys are doing an amazing job, and I'm so proud of all of you, just pushing through even through the midst of this really difficult time to dig deep and really, really address some of the things that are, are the hardest for our most vulnerable community, our members. And so it's so important that we do that, because we're only as strong as, you know, our weakest, our weakest, we need those, we need to bring them up. So I just really, just so thankful for you guys and love everything that you're doing. Really appreciate it. And thanks to the community members you've given to. And I know there's a lot who've been going out and serving and free meal and making the masks and all of it. And so it's just such a testament to our community and what an amazing community we have.
Oh, thank you. I, I really do appreciate that. And that's one thing I should have mentioned is, yes, we are providing these supportive services. Once the, these community members do find that they are in, in housing, that we, we are there with them, we're gonna provide supportive services down, down the road. We are, have long-term investment in their success. And yeah, we're, we're definitely here for, for them, the entire team.
Any comments or thoughts they'd like to share? Councilmember Pergel?
I just wanted to thank you so much. I just got a note from a friend of mine who I met several years ago, who just looked at his apartment yesterday. So he'll be moving in very soon. He's been out on the streets for a long time, very sick, very sick. And to be indoors is such a blessing for him and for anyone that's getting housed. And I, I've watched, well, I just love you guys. You guys are doing, you're, you're just killing it. You're just out there. You're so compassionate. You're helpful. You love people, and it shows. And I think that the manifestation of your work is real clear, that you love your job and you love the people you work with. So I really, really, I love you guys. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else have anything they want to, Councilmember Castellano?
Um, let's see, I just wanna, you all probably know, but just express how much, at least the people I've talked to who are houseless, have expressed how much they appreciate the support that they receive from you all and how much they feel respected. And my perception of that, and, and from talking to people, is it inspires people to be part of the community. And so I, I really appreciate your work in building those bridges in Eureka. So, thank you. Keep it up. Yeah, it's nice. Thank you.
Thank you.
I also want to add that, you know, things aren't gonna be getting easier for a lot of people for a while. And people are gonna be finding, more people are gonna be finding themselves in vulnerable situations. And knowing that we have this great team, ready to help folks when they need it, can hopefully prevent people from getting in, in deeper or worse positions because they know that they have places that they can go and get help and support and, and be, and be valued, members of the community. You guys all really do a great job. And then I seen, I don't see any other comments, so I'm gonna let you guys and just breathe a sigh of relief. And I'm gonna now invite Chief Watson and Sergeant LaFrance are gonna talk about their updated homelessness survey.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Hopefully you can hear me fine. I'm gonna turn it over to Sergeant LaFrance in just a minute, and he's gonna take you through the results of EPD's latest comprehensive homeless survey. As you recall, we completed one that over a year ago, one of the most comprehensive homeless surveys of the unsheltered in Eureka conducted in, at least my memory. We had obtained a lot of good data through that survey. The one that we conducted this year, which is headed up by Sergeant LaFrance and his team, is even more comprehensive. It was completed over the course of just over a month, through the first couple of weeks of the COVID crisis. In fact, about the time we wrapped it up, beginning of April. We surveyed over two hundred homeless individuals in Eureka during this latest survey. So the data that we obtained from this process is very important to help craft and shave the outreach and services that we offer to the homeless community and to their service providers and our community partners. So without further ado, I'll turn it over to Sergeant LaFrance, who should be sharing his screen shortly.
Can you guys hear me all right? Okay.
Yes.
Yes, we can.
I'm here with all my friends today, so I appreciate you having me tonight. I'm gonna start sharing my screen. Alright. So for our 2020 homeless survey, kind of working through some of the methodology and some of the background on it, and then we'll push into the results with some conclusions, the answers and summaries. So we did our surveys between March eighth and April fourth of this year. It was CSET and uplift collaborated together on this. We use SurveyMonkey on smartphones, tablets and laptops. Initially, we had five paper surveys to make sure the survey floated pretty well, and then we converted them over to SurveyMonkey. The surveys were done in-person, so one-on-one basis. And of course, during COVID, we had one of our outreach workers calling into the mission to do the surveys. The margin of error was about plus or minus four percent. That's based on SurveyMonkey's calculations. It's a pretty good number, high confidence, and we got a, a good amount of surveys done based on the population. So until this thirty-eight questions, the first question we're not gonna share tonight is the names. And the three last questions are random other questions that don't actually have results, besides just locations and who could, who actually gave the survey. So responses are all, all self-reported. So we asked the question, they respond to us as is. Even if we saw something that we know has a mental health issue, if they say no, the answer is no. Mostly are, are open-ended, but there's a lot of preset categories that were developed when the survey first was put together earlier this year. We have an option for other, so we can actually comment. And if we had a result that wasn't categorized, we can just fill it in. And then names are included in the survey for duplication reasons. And the only people having access to those are myself and Chief Watson. So we need to go through a verification process. So after we were done the survey, we looked at all the other responses, the comments. And sometimes those other responses actually fit in a category, so they're re-categorized into the appropriate category. And some of them didn't fit, didn't fit any category at all. They were left. But some, soon after I realized we had a bunch of the same responses, we actually put those in their own separate categories that we created, which actually was pretty interesting with some of the results I'll share. And then we checked for duplication surveys. There were ten of them made by submission errors in the system. And then only two individuals were surveyed twice. And so the way I handled that, I just went the last, the most recent survey that was done with them. So initially, we had two hundred twenty-three surveys, including the duplications and the duplicate surveys. We went down to a two hundred eleven. So some factors impacting the survey, obviously time of year. We know that the homeless population flows. It goes up and down throughout the year. That's a factor. However, our long-term strategy for this is to go bi-annual, and we'll still connect the same timeframe in the second week of March and have a good third or fourth period for sample. And then, of course, COVID-19, regardless or not, we still pushed through the survey. We thought about discontinuing it, but we pushed forward anyways, and we still got really good results despite the crisis. So some comparisons real quick from two thousand eighteen, two thousand twenty survey. Throughout the survey, you'll see the, you'll see some two thousand eighteen results in gold, and you'll, or sorry, in yellow, you'll see the two thousand twenty in gold. But some of the differences in two thousand eighteen, there's actually a four-month period, August to December. It's a pretty, pretty wide sample. There's only fifteen questions, and there's, were a whole lot of response categories that were initially set up. And then we only connected a hundred ninety surveys in two thousand eighteen, so we already had two hundred eleven more surveys than two years ago. So the definition for this survey for homelessness or homeless is someone living on the streets in a vehicle, someone who calmly stays at the shelter, but is not a member of the program member at the mission or at the Benny's Blinga Village. And then it has to be more than the above and have to be inside the city when we contact them. For the presentation, the two thousand eighteen survey results will be in yellow, two thousand twenty is in gold. And then there are some numbers that are, they're rounded, so some are. numbers that are rounded, so some are actually, it'll show zero, but it's actually less than 1%, some of them are, just for clarification. And this survey, the actual survey data and the presentation we posted on our transparency portal, I believe it was tonight or tomorrow. Okay, so again, question one was the name, question two is age. The giant pocket right here, we look at this between 30 and 50, 59 years old. If 50, 54 is an anomaly, then we would see a straight up and straight down trending, trend lines. So right, and when we talk about the males and females, we separated also a little bit in this, you'll see the, the categories are right in that pocket also. So again, it kind of seems to peak at 35 to 39 and then drift back down. And we're not seeing any, any children unaccompanied under 18, they've always been with someone. And on the bottom here, you'll see incomprehensible or nonsensical. You'll see a lot of our responses because when we talk with our folks, some of them are talking nonsense because either of addiction or mental health issues. And so we did include that in our responses. So gender, we're the exact same percent for the most part from between males and females. And then we had 1% non-binary this year. So about seven males and three females. I thought that number of females is gonna go up, just what we're seeing, but the data is showing us that it's staying the same. So race ethnicity, a couple, a couple pockets here also. If you look up to, the light green is the Humboldt County, the dark green is your to Eureka, and the gold is the survey for us. So 8% population of Asians in Eureka, and we had less than a half of percent that are homeless in Eureka. Hispanics, 13% population Eureka, 6% Native American, this is the one we'll talk about later. So 3% make up Eureka's population, 11% are on the streets are, are homeless. So one of the 10 homeless people are Native American. So family relationship status, most are single. That's still about the same in that plus or, plus or minus four pocket. Who do you live with? And most are single, so most live alone. Again, the, the number for the children down here is less than half a percent that we interviewed. We do know that there are teenage, we know that number's probably higher, but again, the people that we surveyed was less than a half a percentage. Highest level education, this is interesting also when we break down the male, female. But right now, the highest level of education is some high school overall for the entire, entire group. We had someone that said they had a doctorate, a couple of masters, some bachelor's degrees. So we do have somewhat of an educated homeless population with more than the 50% plus have actually been graduated high school. Monthly income, this should not be a surprise, 44% said they make nothing a month. That should not surprise anybody. Again, it's all pretty low, low monthly income. If you look at the red, 78% could not afford to live in Humboldt County or in Eureka. So $879 is monthly rent for $947 for Humboldt overall. So again, 78% could not afford rent. Now we have the other category. So 13% couldn't afford rent, utilities, food. And I'm guessing that category could be pushed further up to the 12, 50 to 1500, or maybe 1500 to 1700 depending. So those are troubling numbers. We'll talk about a little bit also. So last time you're employed. So currently, I believe it's less than 2% said they were employed. And meanwhile, folks that recently lost their jobs, about 17%, and this giant pocket of red here, which I believe is up to 40%, have not been employed more than six years. So that's a long time not to be employed, 40-plus percent. Military service is something we already, we kind of knew, nine out of 10 are not veterans. We see, if we do see a veteran on the street, they are quickly swept up by services or we connect them directly to services. But it's good to see we're not seeing a whole lot of veterans on the street. Where did you sleep last night? These are some jumping numbers for us from 2018. So shelter, 4% in 2018, up to 18%. And I'm not sure if that was because the sample was done from August to December, and ours was done from March to April with weather. But again, it's a giant increase in people using the shelter, which is a good sign because we're following people towards resources, which should often connect them to other resources to make their life better. Big drop in green belts, 15% drop from people staying in green belts. Same with vehicles. And then apparently a 6% drop in friends' houses. I'm not sure what's going on there. That's also a drop. And it's still about the same plus or minus four compared to the street alley and doorway from 2018, but still in that same pocket. How long you been homeless for? So three to five years is right now the biggest category. And then more than 10 years is about the same also as 2018. Again, this will all be available to you later also, the raw data. How long have you lived in Humboldt? 30% have been born or raised here. And then almost 25% of any from more than 20 years. So most people have been here for, half our population has been here for quite a long time. We want to, why did you come to Humboldt? A lot of people think resources and marijuana. Well, that's definitely, the data's usually showing it's different. So these questions, people can respond with multiple responses. We ask them, why did you come to Humboldt? They can start naming multiple stuff off. We, we input it into the system, into the survey. But the number one for most people is family, friends, relationships. That's why they're coming here. A lot of people think this resources, apparently, just, again, just the data is saying that's not necessarily true. Where'd you live prior to becoming homeless? So about 40% were actually in Eureka before they became homeless. And this pocket right here, 42% came from outside the area. So even though we know people have been here for, 50% have been here for a long time, you know, it says it's in line, but again, we're seeing people come out from the outside come in. And if we need to, whenever you guys want information, I could probably break down more, filter more data. I don't know a lot of this information. We can really kind of narrow it down. Why are you homeless? Again, we can allow multiple responses to this. Number one's unemployment or lost income, lack of affordable housing, family, alcohol, drugs, mental health, poverty. These are just the top 10. I initially had a couple, a couple pages of this. This is the top 10 to share. And on the very bottom of the top 10 is obviously the choice is 7%, which is still pretty low. Periods of homelessness, one is right now the highest. It could be 10 years, it could be one month, it could be one day. So there's no real qualifying on, we didn't really qualify that response. But again, 31% said they've been homeless once in their life. And then 22% says six times or more. There's kind of a jump there. Are you satisfied? This is a giant jump in the number for us. So 25% say they are satisfied with their life. We did add the neither satisfied or unsatisfied category, and that's almost 10%. That's an interesting jump. I have no idea why that happened. I suppose the data's showing us right now speaking with people. So three fourths, up to three fourths could be unhappy, and about a quarter are satisfied with their life. That's also interesting with this, the last question is your lifestyle matter of choice. 40, 45% saying yes, this is a matter of choice. So in theory, if we pulled the refusing, incomprehensible with the yes, it could be 50/50, or it could get a little more separated, but that's still pretty close numbers. Physical disabilities or chronic health problems, more than half the homeless population up here obviously have health problems. And that's also one of the reasons they're high risk for COVID. Diagnosis, treated for, supposed to be taking medication for a mental health issue, 53% are saying so. And again, we talked to people that said that we know have mental health issues, and they said no, so we inputted the answer as no. My guess would be that number's probably higher. Where do you usually go where you're sick or injured? 65% go to St. Joe's. And then mobile medical makeup, sorry, open door makes up about 50% also. We allowed a multiple response here because some people share their time with St. Joe's and with Open Door, and we wanted to just kind of show the overall impact. What's troubling is 10%, one attempt said they go nowhere. Visits in the ER in the past 12 months, 31% have not gone to the ER. I'm not sure if that's good or bad. One of the numbers also we look at is six or more times the ER, almost 15 or 14%. I didn't, didn't do a cost analysis, but I'm guessing that costs a fair amount of money for those visits, six or more. And so the financial impact to St. Joe's is probably pretty significant. Health insurance, Medi-Cal, Medicare is number one with partnership number two. Again, 1 to 10 said they have no insurance at all. Again, that's troubling. Drugs or alcohol been a problem in your life? This wasn't a direct question we asked, but we were able to filter out the data and get these numbers. So yes, 65% and no said 20, 28%. So 65% saying drugs or alcohol have been a problem in their life. Then the initial way we asked the questions, we asked, have drugs or alcohol been a question, a problem in your life? And if so, what? And so we actually broke it down. And this is again, interesting because most people assume that heroin is the number one issue we have in Eureka. That's absolutely not true. It is methamphetamine. And based on our homeless population there, it doubles meth compared to heroin. And then number two is actually alcohol. And we asked the questions, how often use drugs and how often use alcohol? So the biggest one, 40, almost 40%, said they never use alcohol. Meanwhile, 8% said they use it daily. I'm not sure on how accurate these responses are. I use it almost like the donut theory. Yesterday, if you have, it's been a pretty stressful week. If you ask me how many donuts I ate yesterday, I actually ate three. I would have told you two. So the numbers are a little bit, it's okay to laugh. They're a little bit off, in my opinion, because often we don't want to make ourselves, have our perception of ourselves appear as bad as we think we, we actually are, actually they probably are. So we probably downsize it a little bit. And then for how often use drugs, so daily, 28% say use drugs daily. And again, we didn't define on what on occasion means. We did read those, you know, use daily, weekly, on occasion or monthly. We did read those answers to them, and they chose one. But 28% wanted or for use drugs daily. I'm guessing that number's also low. How do you support yourself? Public assistance, number one. Recycling, number two. I was, I knew that's an issue we have here with people recycling, but I didn't realize one out of four are recycling to, to make their way through life. Handlings, one out of 10. Theft, that was actually included on there, 3%. There are some other items on there, including prostitution, which are categorized under other. We'd have many responses, but some of the others were interesting as well. Again, these were the, the top answers. Do you receive any of the following assistance? Food stamps, almost 70% is number one, SSI, and then almost 20% get nothing. What prevents you from using assistance? This is the top 10. 22% says use everything, everything possible they can. Interesting number, the 16% for lack of fall through motivation. That was not a category I created initially. These are responses from people verbally saying, I have lack of fall through a lack of motivation to get it done. If you put this with haven't gotten to, around to applying, those in theory could be applied together. It's a lack of movement forward on their behalf to get things done. But again, the way it was a lot, the surveys allowed multiple responses. Some of the haven't got around to applying and lack of fall through motivation could be the same person. But again, we could break that, break down the data further if we had it, if we needed to. 10% don't want anything at all. And then the other one here is something we can definitely work on is lack of knowledge. We had another category on the second page of the top 20, lack of knowledge. So they don't know how to apply or where to apply. That's definitely a gap that can be filled, hopefully. And I'm not sure if that's our responsibility or GCH's responsibility. But either way, that's, that's a category we definitely can address. What resources do you use? So number one again is free meal. Almost eight out of 10 people use free meal. That has been the number one location. We know that. That's why our CSETs are every single day working with folks. That's why we uplift every day with us. That's why we're bringing in the county home to focus strategies there, because most of the homeless people go to free meal, and that's the prime spot to be outreach, make connections every day, say hi to people, check in with people. It's, it's an outreach location ask be used. Food for people, I was surprised by. I've got acquainted with Ann Holton from Food for People during COVID crisis. I didn't realize how big a population they serve and the need for us to be assisting them also. And Eureka rescue missions, number three. It's interesting, there's a slight drop at the, in the mission from 2018 to 2020, but yet an increase in shelter usage. I'm not sure why that is. We probably pulled some further data, but yes, it's, it's still top three. And open doors use a lot. We added the library. Libraries use a lot. And again, that's one location we should be focusing outreach out because we're seeing a lot of people there as well. I did that two, two charts for this one, to show how many resources are available to people. One thing I think is pretty cool, if you go all the way to the bottom with Betty, with Betty to her house and respite care, 1% of our population have used it compared to 2018, 8%. My guess is knowing from working with Betty every day is that Betty does a phenomenal job of getting people into actual housing after they get through a program. And I would guess that would be why there's a giant change in that system as well. Resources, services, opportunities you need, of course, place to live, employment, property storage, documentation assistance, day center, transportation, shelter, subsubuse, mental health services, and one attempt said they want nothing. Biggest barriers for housing, income, employment, lack of affordable housing, upfront costs, mental health issues, subsubuse, disabilities. And these are issues obviously that the city's working on addressing also with Uplift. And then barriers for employment, physical disabilities is number one, mental health issues, housing, appearance, clean clothing, having hygiene. A lot of people, people we spoke with about housing, they want a place to feel stable so they can actually, you know, get things done, settle at the end of the day, and then begin the day assert, you know, take a shower and move into going to work. 36 was just additional comments that they can make if they want additional contact from Uplift or us. We did a location of the survey. That's one information I didn't, I didn't go through and do all the comments that she verified. Eventually, I may go through and pull all the information from there and actually build a map to show where all our surveys were conducted at, to see if there's different pockets where we can do further outreach with folks. And then, of course, who conducted the survey, we tracked that. Larry Alexander from Uplift was the number two, and then Andrew Endly, who was an officer for us, who filled in for CSET in Old Town, actually did the whole surveys for us. So break down some comparisons, male and females. We do lots of things to look at the different resources we have and the needs we have. So this is the top, the top percent for each category. So the females obviously 30 to 34%, and then males 35 to 44. It was actually a double, an equal to categories that combined together. So it's still 33% for that. Most are white, most are single. Females, I should more education than males. So some college compared to some high school. Monthly income still zero. This is an interesting number here was with the, where'd you sleep last night? Homeless shelter, 2% for females, 25% for the, for the males. That to me shows we need shelter for females. 2% is nothing. I know Kristen Freeman at the mission's doing an awesome job over there. She's limited on the space. Of course, most are local. And then for females, you can see the breakdown, family ship break, relationship breakdown, and then unemployment for males, why they're homeless. Satisfied with life? Females, I think no. Males, no, but a lot, yeah, so a lot less females are satisfied with like their life right now than males are on the streets. And lifestyle matter choices, that's pretty close to 50/50 across the board, a lot. So closer for males than females. So it's pretty even across the board, except for drug or alcohol problem. 17% females reported a higher percentage, which I found interesting. And then break down for the, the drugs and alcohol for males and females. Most, almost half the females are using meth. And then 37% of males use alcohol and 35% use meth. Again, I was also surprised by those numbers. I broke it down as such, I have a different chart to see. Again, some people like different charts, so I just threw it together real quick to make a little bit of different visual. But again, heroin's the number one problem we're having right now. Sorry, methamphetamine is two to one compared to heroin. two to one compared to heroin. Support themselves, public assistance is number one, but females are recycling equally as much as getting public assistance. Then preventing them, pretty much the same thing, lack of father motivation is not getting around to applying. For females, free meal, food for people, open door, mobile medical at number three, and then free meal rescue mission and food people are for the males. Barrier for housing, both as income and then for females for employment, that they're saying housing and the males are saying disabilities. And we're just closing it out here. So a couple of charts I put together, just kind of interesting things. So again, Native American homeless, two point five percent of Eureka's population are native, ten point nine percent are, are homeless, are homeless population. I talked to Euro tribal police chief Greg O'Rourke, who's a friend of mine also, yesterday during our town hall upfront. He agrees that we, they join the work with us and bring in resources also to focus on some strategy to addressing that. For me, I want to really dig into underlying causes of why that population is that high. Maybe, I have no idea. I want to, I can filter the data and actually look at it and look for underlying trends. But we need, we need to have aggressive outreach strategies with appropriate resources for this. Again, we've worked with several tribal partners and the fact that we're a good relationship with Euro who will come down here and work with us directly, that's very, very valuable to us. But I think we can make a dent in this, that ten percent. And we need to do it. It's the right thing to do. So again, housing ninety-two percent overall can't afford or were struggling to afford housing. And that's just with those, those categories in the red and the purple. So ninety-two percent could not afford or struggle to keep housing. Some insights to, just a graphic here. So obviously the gold is subsubuse, the light blue is mental health and physical health is dark blue and just showing the barriers across the board. What I found interesting with the resource needs. So obviously, subsubuse is a major issue with our homeless population. Only fourteen percent said they need assistance with that. I'm not sure across the board for all the resources, is it because we're doing so well or because we don't have enough or because they don't want it? I don't, I don't know how that works for that, for that, what mindset that is with that. The one interesting thing is for physical health, you know, fifty-three percent report this, well, health, obviously there are barriers for for housing and for employment, but only one percent that said they needed assistance with physical health. Again, I don't know if we're just doing such a tremendous job across the county with open door on addressing it, or people just aren't really wanting that. I don't know. Then complexity, we always talk about subsubusement to health and, and physical, physical health of people as underlying causes of homelessness. One thing we didn't ask any questions about were aces or trauma, as that would have extended the survey to about fifty questions. Which I just, I, we had a hard time going with that many questions. Thirty-eight was a struggle. But again, looking at the board, we know a lot of people use drugs, mental health problems, physical health, but almost half are, are close to half are choosing to be, to live life that way and only, but a quarter are satisfied. So to me, that really shows a lot of inner conflict with people that they, I don't know, it's just, it's just a very complicated when you look at the, this, this chart itself. The inner trauma almost feeling that they, they're somewhat satisfied, but they, they have those different issues going on in life. But they're often choosing to do that. And then lastly for me, you know, we did the survey every year, it's kind of get a better understanding of our homeless population. It gives, does give us a giant, giant picture of our homeless, but we also need to think, hey, you know, each, each individual survey is a person. And so each individual has to have a different approach. And so it really, we have to look beyond those numbers. Because each one is really a person, not just, not just numbers. And overall, we look at this, how does this direct us in strategies to guide us towards building programs or resources, but also knowing that we do have many, many barriers. And again, looking at individual, not the overall and taking that into account as well. And I can take any questions from you guys as well. And I'm sure the chief will want to jump in here as also.
Councilmember Arroyo.
Thank you. That was a really excellent and detailed presentation and I really do appreciate all of that information. I, a couple of things stood out to me. I mean, lots of things stood out, but a couple of things seem like questions right off the bat. And one was, you know, I know we have this new Danco project that looks like it's almost done, that is a veterans, to my knowledge, is veterans housing. So given that there don't seem to be a lot of homeless veterans on the streets. Do you have any knowledge about kind of what, how, how that place will be filled up? Did they already have a waiting list? Like what's going on there with that project?
Sure. So actually, I believe the first people moving in tomorrow, I believe, to Danco. So it sleeps thirty-five beds for veterans, fifteen for people that are, probably should be conserved or have severe mental health issues. So those ones moving in, I believe tomorrow, the next day. Which is a good thing for us. But again, in my, again, my opinion is we definitely need more shelter space for lower veterans, we do take care of them, but our need right now for the city we're seeing is we need more housing that's available to people that don't fit that criteria.
Okay. And then just one more, you know, what struck me, I guess, was the the difference between women and men both as far as how they, how and why they became homeless and their satisfaction with that as a part of their lives or as the, you know, a defining aspect of their life. And so to me, that, that looks like there's sort of low hanging fruit there to address the needs of, of women who are homeless. And I was wondering if you could speak to your thoughts around that and what strategies you might be looking to employ to support homeless women getting resources.
Yeah, I think, I think the biggest thing, I talked to Brian Hall a little bit. Do you get to open up their women's side shelter built upon that, maybe a bigger facility? They do pump a lot of resources into that place to get people actually to permanent housing. Kristen Freeman over the past during COVID actually housed, I think, nine or ten people actually to permanent housing. And so that's one direction for us. Two, Betty obviously with her family shelter, and I'm not sure if it's going to be also for women, which will be next door to us here EP, that's also more movement. We do need to focus more strategies for, for women in the, that are homeless population. I'm not exactly sure how to go about that myself. We definitely need to collaborate more with different community partners, possibly open door. But again, I'm willing to collaborate with anybody to work on any subject with homelessness and address the issue.
Thank you. Councilmember Allison and then Castellano.
Hi, thank you for all this information and detail put into this report. It's really nice. Um, I, I had a question about about like how, how some of the people out there fund themselves and, and you said it seemed like twenty-five percent of people sustain themselves through recycling and the, the transfer stations closed right now. Do you know if that's affecting people in a, in a different way? It seems, it seems like a lot of people have access to some sort of food, whether it be from free meal or food for people or things like that. You know, just, just curious about what's going on with, with tho- those who, you know, try to find income through recycling, but just can't right now.
Yeah, so I'll hit up, I'll hit up the food first. One, you, people are eating pretty well right now for food. The missions feeds breakfast and dinner, free meals serving large bags that contain enough food for about two meals, if not more. Betty is a serving from three thirty to four thirty air facility and Betty cooks phenomenal food. And then also Salvation Army between eleven and two feeds, bags and also boxes weekdays. So foods, people are, if they want to go to locations, there's a lot of food, a lot of food that's actually very high quality, it's very good. As for the recycling, what's interesting, there's at least two guys I know on the streets that are actually buying recycling from other people. And they're actually stored, they're, they're, I'm not sure where it's going to, putting in storage units, but they're actually storing it until they can, until it opens back up. They're going to just bring all the recycling there. So if you have a bag of recycling, I'm going to give you five dollars for it, or twenty dollars. So that's kind of the system that we're working right now. What is, has been interesting for us to see that folks are doing that.
It's like capitalism.
Yeah, it's like a black market of, of recycling, seriously. We know one guy. He had a ton of recycling. He has a brother up in McKinleyville. For some reason, he's homeless on the streets in Eureka. But he transfers all his recycling from McKinleyville and is waiting for the day when the recycling bins are, when this recycling center opens up. And I'm not sure how much money he'll have, but I'm guessing it'll be a good chunk.
So.
Very innovative people.
So, so with, with recycling and a source of income, is, is, would some of that be used for purchasing substances or things like that? And is, and is that impacting people's sobriety at this time? Like, like just curious, is it, is it like a good thing for some people that, that they might be coming sober? Or, or is this leading towards other issues down, down the stream, so to say?
Yeah, that's, that's a really good question. Just again, my opinion based on my, my per daily perspective, is that for some folks, if they're going canning to go sell it to a guy who's going to buy it from them on like a black market with, with recycling, my guess is they want the money quick to get, to get well or to get high because of addiction issues. So it's very much a possibility with our population. However, during COVID right now, we're definitely seeing much more of the mental health issues than the drug issues. And again, some days you can't tell, you can flip a coin, it's one or the other or, or both. But again, overall, I can't really tell overall the, the effects of it or the outcomes of it right now.
Thank you.
I was coughing. Does anybody else have a question? Uh, councilmember, oh, Castellano first, I think she was already there and then Nester.
Firstly, thank you for the report and, and for the amount of time I see you spending talking to people and getting to know people and really yeah, just really wanting to understand what's going on and the complexities. I really appreciate that. I'm curious, well, one, though it's troubling, I am hopeful that this identification of the, that there's a higher percentage than, than the, the, basically there's a high percentage of native people who are homeless. I'm hopeful that since identifying that, we can create some, it feels, it feels an imperative to, you know, create some plans and address that. So thank you for yeah, identifying that. And then I'm curious in terms of the high level of meth use and addiction, I mean, that's not a surprise to me. But one, one of the things I wonder is, you know, my understanding is with heroin addiction that there's no more treatment programs and, you know, available out there. And I'm, I'm curious if there's space for more, you know, and I know that the, there's not the same kind of healing process with meth addiction as there is with heroin. Sometimes, you know, it's so destructive that someone can't kind of regain their same mental capacity. So I'm curious if there's a space to advocate for more like support programs for people with who have experienced meth addiction or, you know, like residential, you know, like, like housing options, you know, specifically with the kinds of, kind of more intensive supports that I, you know, feel like people with meth addiction may need or, or who've had damages due to meth addiction might need.
I think Waterfront obviously has been a key partner of us for a while and they obviously deal with all addictions. Again, I know we, HRC and Crossroads who also deal with meth, heroin, alcohol doesn't really matter across the board. So I'm not really sure if I'm the specialist to, to say this kind of housing options for these folks or like halfway houses or how that sport looks like. You know, for us, we really just find the people on the streets, get to know them, get to see what their addiction issues are, if they want to get assistance, we, we hand deliver them to those facilities and we have the experts to do their job on that, on that side. And I really suggest reaching out to Waterfront or John Arletta at HRC or Wes at Crossroads, because they probably have some really good ideas on that also. And Brian Hall down to Mission as well. And the chief might want to jump in also on us.
I think you're doing a fine job. Continue.
Thank you. I, I will follow up on that with people.
Any other questions or comments? Oh, yeah, Heidi, I'm sorry.
I just, yeah, I just wanted to say thank you so much and just the work that you're doing. It is really amazing gathering this, just pushing through the crisis to gathering this important information so things can be looked at to address. It just, you know, this kind of information is so valuable and we can't, we don't, we're basically shooting in the dark when we don't have answers to these things. And so I know you're, you've really become an expert on our homeless and our community and it's amazing. The work that you and your team have done and I just appreciate, appreciate it so much and the way that you've formed partnerships as well throughout the community, not just with the different partners, but also with the homeless community. It's, it's so invaluable. It's what, it's what helps bring about change. So I really appreciate the work that you guys have done and thank you for this incredible information. I would love to have a copy of it. And I just thank you, really appreciate it.
Yeah, I'll just, oh, councilmember forgot.
So I just had a quick question. So did I hear you correctly that people do not come to Eureka for resources? That's not the main reason people come to Eureka? It's not because of the great resources we provide here?
That's great. Yes, this is again self recording, seven percent said they come here for, they came here for resources. Fifty percent said family worship or friends.
Wow. Well, thank you so much for presenting such clarified and concise information. I appreciate it and I appreciate you guys. You guys are the best. Thank you for all you do.
And I was just going to reiterate the same thing, that this is always, last year when you brought it was super valuable and the fact that we're keeping up on it and continuing to have both the, I really liked when you talked about, we're gathering the data, but also recognizing that every situation is individual. I think that's a really important distinction that, that you make when you, when you do this, because data is so crucial. And everybody is, every situation is different. So thank you so much for everything that you guys do between you and the uplift team. We really, we have a lot to be proud of. So thank you.
And mayor, that data is going to be shared with our community partners, including DHHS to also help guide them with their program and services.
Excellent. I think that that will be useful for him. And then councilmember Arroyo.
Sergeant LaFrance, since you are out there, you know, really meeting a lot of people and seeing the needs firsthand. If there was one thing that you would take action on to improve matters for you know, for homeless folks in Eureka, what, what would it be?
I think the targets, if I had target a certain category within, like I don't like categorizing, but looking overall, probably females and natives would be to address, focus on those issues. I think we can definitely take a dent on those and actually make massive improvements. Because definitely a workable, definitely workable presenters, in my opinion.
Great, thank you.
That's good information to note too. Thanks. All right. Well, and we have actually one more report. City attorney, Black is going to talk about the moratorium, which has now lapsed. There was a, a little bump from the governor's action. And so why don't you catch us up with where we are and what we can do to move forward?
Thank you, Mayor. The, when you adopted your, I'll call it an eviction defense ordinance. It was essentially adopted in parallel to the governor's orders, but it extended them in ways that he did not choose to do. He left a local option. He specifically referenced a local option, for example, to apply eviction defenses, eviction protections to commercial leaseholds in addition to residential leaseholds. You, I think, adopted a more sophisticated scheme than the governor's protections, but the Than the governor's protections, but the governor's protections do still exist out there. Your, um, your ordinance expired uh, at midnight on May thirty first. The, the, it didn't expire, the ordinance didn't expire, but the protections. Uh, kind of expired or were limited to the months of April and May. Uh, and one of the reasons for that was the governor's uh, initial orders provided that. Uh, under his authority, he was authorizing uh, cities and counties. To adopt these additional protections. He on Friday, the twenty ninth of May, uh, issued a new executive order. That effectively extends the provisions of his earlier order to the end of July. And so although your, um, certain provisions of your ordinance have expired, he effectively authorized you to extend those. Uh, unfortunately, timing wise, it was a little too late to get that uh, on the agenda. Uh, so, uh, we now are faced with a situation where you have the power to extend those protections if you want to. Uh, but we are looking at a gap period which could be cured by a special meeting or. We could also have uh, this on your agenda for your next regular meeting of, I believe, uh, June sixteenth. So, I guess what I'm telling you is you have the, the power to extend these protections. Uh, and the question is, uh, if, do you wanna do that? Do you wanna at least contemplate that? And if so, when? How do you, how do you want to uh, agendize that?
Council member Allison?
Um, I wouldn't mind agendizing it for discussion. It's, it's, you know, obvious there's still quite a few people unemployed in Eureka and Humboldt and general and the nation at this time. Um, the federal government has been a bit lackluster in providing economic relief to uh, the people who have lost their jobs. So I'd say it's still pertinent to explore options to protect renters at this time.
So my question would be, um. Could the decision that we make if we do it at the next council meeting include June? Or is June a time when people just have to pay their rent and then we start on July first? So can it be retroactive to the beginning of the month if we did it at the next meeting?
So, if someone was unable to pay their rent for the month of June. The condition they would find themselves in on June sixteenth is. Uh, there would be an arrears that they would be dealing with. I believe that your ordinance, if you renewed it in June or extended it in June, could provide relief to those folks. The problem is those people that are trapped in the uncertainty. Of whether they will have protection from an ordinance. Uh, would have choices to make between now, now and then that might be very difficult for them. Uh, they might have to sacrifice other necessities. Uh, or they might have to experience the anxiety of going into rent default without knowing how much protection they're going to have. So, if for any other reason, if, if you want to. Have a special meeting to address this subject, I think there are other things that are part of your ongoing conversations such as. Um, questions around the appointment of an interim city manager, that sort of thing that might be valid subjects. For a, a special session as well. So you could get, you can get some things done if you can find the time to agendize that in special session.
Council member Bragel.
This seems to me to be something that we need to do sooner than later. I would like to see if we can't schedule a special meeting to discuss what we wanna do. Um, I just, I think that if waiting till the next meeting. Um, if they have to start looking at their arrears and they're still not work, I think it's just, it's, and to ease people's minds, I'd like to get it done sooner if possible.
That's the, uh, council member Castellano.
I agree with council member Bragel. Um, and I feel like this wouldn't necessarily have to be a very long meeting. Um, so it may be easier to schedule uh, sooner than later, um, because it. You know, it, I, I don't think. We would necessarily have a lot of changes to bring forward.
Council member Messner.
So just for a point of clarification, um, if we did. Another meeting, it wouldn't take multiple readings or any of that. Um, it would just be done as soon as we made the decision. Is that what you're saying? But it does have to be agendized and that's why we would need the other meeting.
So we would bring it forward as an urgency ordinance. Uh, that could take effect immediately. Yep, that would require. A forfeits vote. So number one, you'd need the attendance of four members at the special meeting. Number two, uh, four, four people would have to agree. Um, no matter whether you had four or five as your quorum.
But it would only take that one vote, correct? It's like it wouldn't take, okay. Um. Great.
So, uh, my thought is, um. While I understand the urgency for wanting to get this done, cause I agree that there, that that is important. Um, I wanna be mindful that this is, um, an issue that affects a lot of people, not just renters. And I want, and I wanna be conscious that we've had a lot of special meetings lately. Uh, so if we do this, I wanna make sure that it is well publicized. Um, and that people have time and an opportunity to respond to it. And. I, I don't want it to feel like we snuck it in. And. And that's really my main thing. I, I think it's important to get it done quickly, but I also just wanna make sure it doesn't look like we're trying to do it. Outside of, outside of what is normal.
So I would say based. Looking at that as a significant consideration. Uh, based on the media, I think the question is what media resources are there to? Get the word out that your council is considering this extension? And how much time would that take to really get it out there? Forty-eight hours, seventy-two hours, um, something like that might be your consideration.
Yeah, I would give us at least a few, I wouldn't give it the minimum amount of time. I would give it at least a, a couple extra days. So that people have time to digest it and respond to it. Did you have a thought, um? Acting city manager Powell, since you're a media person, you should know this stuff out, so.
Well, certainly, a special meeting requires twenty-four hours notice and if you wanted to do. Uh, or like, I would suggest I could get an agenda out tomorrow for Friday or I could get an agenda tomorrow for Monday. Um, either of those days would allow for us to do a press release and. Um, and for Bob to prepare the ordinance. Well, let me take that back. That would be a short timeframe for Bob to take, uh, prepare the ordinance. So perhaps getting it out Thursday for a Monday date would be appropriate.
Um, council member Bragel.
So that, that, that was kind of my thought. I, as kind of a compromise, if we were to release it tomorrow, that would be Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, have the meeting on Monday. We would just really have to make sure that people uh, got the information. Um, over that time period.
With really clear instructions on how to reach out to us.
Yes.
Yeah. Um, I agree. I, I think I like the Monday better with the notice tomorrow, if that's possible. And we all have to see if we have a. Time for that meeting. So we should probably at least have a half an hour, um, set aside for that, which, uh, I will ask you. Send us an, an agenda with lots of timeframes and we can figure out. Uh, Mondays are great for me, so.
Okay, and I can say that it would be before five-thirty as we have a planning commission meeting at five-thirty on Monday. So it would be sometime in the three to five range.
Yeah, maybe if we do it at four-thirty, I think that would give Kim, who has to get off work and stuff, so.
Okay.
Um, we'll look. Do it at four, that's my, that's my window.
Does four work for you?
Four works for me.
It looks like four might be a good time.
Very good.
Excellent. Thank you. I'm, I'm glad that we've got this on the agenda and I'm happy that we're able to do it quickly, but I do wanna make sure that people, um, feel engaged.
Yeah.
All right, um, any else for city manager report? All right, so now we'll go to our council reports and I will start with council member Bragel.
Well, I had a very, um, emotional, um. Yeah, emotional and educational weekend. Um, and I'm really grateful for it. Um, you know, growing up here, sometimes I don't realize the magnitude of some of the problems other people experience. Um, cause it doesn't seem like it is bad here. But for me, um. That's, you know, one of the reasons that I went to these three different events with these protests was that because I need to learn more about it. I, I need to educate myself more on what, what really happens. Like I can, I can hear the words, but sometimes I can't completely feel it. And so I'm really working hard to, um, try and be, try and understand more, um, what's happening. Not only in our community, but in other communities. And I would like to say that, you know, it's. Um, I was really surprised at, at how much I don't know. I mean, I don't, I don't know a lot about a lot of things. But you know, I, I do love people and I do care about people. And so it was really surprising to me that I, you know, some of the things and some of the. The reactions that I had. But I do wanna say that, um, one of the things that I do really appreciate, and I did say yesterday, um. Was just how, um, engaged our community was, how well most people got along. I saw so many conversations of great dialogue. Um, after the event yesterday, I got to go have some great dialogue with some women who I possibly offended, make that right. And that made, that felt really good. Um. I just, I hope that as a community, we can start moving forward in, in a way that, um, really supports each individual. And I know for myself that knowing people's stories is critical in far as, as far as building relationships. And so, um, I too, uh. Have been doing a lot of listening. I did say a few words yesterday, but I, I have been doing a lot of listening and I will be doing a lot more and a lot more outreach with the population. Because I just feel like. We are, we're in this together and it's not okay. It's, none of this is okay. Um, so anyway, like I said, I, I had an emotional hangover yesterday. I have one today. But, uh, I'm looking forward to that shifting and I'm learning for, I'm look, learn, looking forward to becoming more educated. On how I can be of service in that regard because. It, I, I, I don't know about other people, but for me, it's so frustrating. It's so frustrating cause I don't sometimes know what to do. I don't know what to do. Um, I know that the thing to do is to not sit in my house and judge the people that are out there. I do know that as people are hurting and. People who, people who hurt, hurt people. Um, so anyway, I just, oh.
Oh no. You're, uh. You have surpassed your time to Kim. Again, you can only talk so long and then your computer just stops, I'm afraid. Um, I'll come back to you if, uh, if you have, oh, you look like you're back. You good? Okay. Uh, council member Messner.
Okay. Oh, I am on still. Um, so yeah, I, I really appreciate that, um. Just the community, I'm so proud of our community and the ways that we have engaged in our EPD and our officers. Just proud of the way that they took a stance against racism. I'm in front of the police department yesterday and. Uh, on Monday and I, I just personally. Was very, um. Overcome with emotion as well at, at seeing the, in general, the. The well response of listening, of hearing one another, um, of being able to really speak with. Uh, with grace and, um, that really occurred pretty, pretty well across the board. I mean, there were. You know, that was a, it's a struggle. Uh, anytime people are hurt, then. It can create that anger and defensiveness and, um, and we all respond that way. So it can be really difficult. Um, and I, I would, again, just like I said yesterday. Uh, really encourage people to reach out to those you know. Um, whether it's officers who had a really long, difficult weekend. I, um. I hope that our officers are gonna get some rest here. Um, but also to, um, members of our community who, of color who, and just checking in and seeing how they're feeling, what's happening, um, with them. Um, there are so many that, that. That, that you know, really tend to sometimes be invisible and we need to. To check in on them, see how they're feeling. I personally talked to quite a few of my family members and friends who are of color and all different. The rainbow, but, um, and just the struggle that this weekend has been across the, um, our community, but also across our nation. And it is, it's hard. My, um. You know, uh, one of the comments that really got me was, when is my, my young boy? Um, gonna not be a cute little boy any longer in people's eyes and it's gonna be assumed a, you know, uh, to be scary and to be a, uh. Um, someone to be afraid of and to fear. Um. And I, you know, I, that's a, that's as a mom, you know, as a parent, that's. That's a painful thing to, to think, you know, and to question and having to have those discussions with your child. You know, personally, that parent, my, my cousin, she said, you know, I had to sit my son down at six and talk to him about how. How people perceive him and how he needs to respond. And, um, you know, most of us have, if we are pulled over, for instance, we might be asked for our. Registration and, you know, license. And, um, my cousin's experience is. That if, you know, if they're pulled over, it's, do you have any warrants out for your arrest? And, you know, why is this white woman with you? Or, you know, some of those things. Um, so I, I just feel like we don't understand and we need to understand. And so, and not just understand, but we need to hear and we need to listen and we need to be responsive. Um, and the, and whatever we can do to reach out to those we know. Um, and just to, to check in. And I am so proud of our officers. I just wanna commend them. Because I, I don't see that here in the same way that I know that many people experience in their communities. And I'm, I'm very grateful and thankful to our, um, to EPD in the way that they've responded to things even yesterday. Um, and how you respond, respond with grace and, um, with really dignity. Um, and it's a continued learning process, you know, for all of us. So, thank you very much for that. Um. Yeah, this weekend though, also restaurants opened. I was able to go to two restaurants and it was wonderful. To experience that and be back in some restaurants, um. Churches, um, some churches opened. We opened this weekend. Um, and there are more openings. So there's things happening. There is movement, but again, it is a twenty-one day trial to see how things are going. So, um, I would encourage the public to just be wise and, and don't just throw caution to the wind. Um, still be. Still be careful and cautious, but not fearful. And we're going to get through this together, all of it together. So, thank you.
Councilmember Allison.
Yeah, I just want to say, now's a good time for reflection and thinking and listening, and based on what everyone else has said so far. But I also wanted to remind people that it's okay to take a break, too, and look after your mental health. Self-care is really important right now, and social media is kind of an endless feed of dread and depression right now. So, you know, just remember that if you need to take a break, if all you're doing is just feeling hopelessness, it's okay to take a step back and look after yourself, too, because you are worth it. And being a good neighbor is about taking care of yourself, too, so that you can be there for others. Just wanted to say that.
Thank you. Councilmember Castellano.
Let's see. Well, I, too, like I think many of us on council and in the community have been thinking a lot about the effects of structural racism here in Humboldt County and in Eureka, and also doing a lot of listening about what people of color are asking for. I would like to, you know, we've been for sure making progress, you know. I mean, I think that there is a lot of real power in the dialogues that have been happening between EPD and Black Humboldt and members of the university, you know, around over the last week. And I'm deeply appreciative of the direction that I think things are moving in. And I feel responsibility as a council member to keep that direction moving forward. You know, and to do so in a way that speaks to community resilience and is wise, you know. But also, I am interested in us working with communities of color to develop some clear action plans and really hear their requests and you know, work with them to implement some changes. So that's just something, I guess I'm curious if other council members are interested in. I know, you know, it was talked about, but I feel like it's valuable to kind of say it here within this context.
I think we definitely, I mean, because at the beginning of the meeting, I was hoping that we could come together and discuss some different ideas about how we move forward with this. Not come with ideas on how to fix anything, but what are some things we can explore to start developing these relationships?
Great. Yeah, and that's what I understood. I sort of wanted to emphasize it and make sure that that really is a plan that we're moving forward on. And let's see, the other thing I've been working on through the Economic Development Consortium has been working with arts and culture leaders in our community through a series of roundtables and surveys. And so over the past few days, I held three two-hour roundtables with arts and culture leaders that were specifically about hearing people's experiences during the pandemic, struggles for artists in the community, and really hearing people's visions and ideas for moving forward. So that has been really exciting, and I'll be creating a report on that. It's, we have so many amazing people in our community who care so much about this place. And so I really look forward to supporting artists and bringing their visions and ideas for community forward. Also, Professor Amy Rack from HSU, you know, has been working with her not geography, she's within the geography, spatial environment and spatial analysis program. And I'm not sure the name of the class, but there is a survey specifically about well-being in Eureka and that they're going to be doing every year. And this is the first year. And so it's been extended through June 30th, and I think this is a fascinating time to be talking about well-being in Eureka in the midst of a pandemic, you know, in the midst of really looking at social change and community. And so please participate in the survey. I'm wondering, I sent you a quick email, Pam, but I'm just wondering if that might be something we could link on the website, or if it would be better to just kind of put it out through our own channels?
I can definitely link it on the website and promote it in some way on the website through the front page. Sure.
Wonderful. Thanks. So, so thank you. So once that's happening, I'll share it through social media and blah de blah. So, and that's, that's my, what I've been doing.
Excellent. Councilmember Royal.
Well, I think most of what I was thinking has been said. I would echo that this has been a time of listening and learning. I do identify as a person of color, and I also realize that I'm I appear and function as a very white person in the world. And I experienced that privilege, and it changes the way that I operate in the world and means that I don't understand on a fundamental level, some of the experiences that people in our community have. And so I've been listening and learning and sadly, hearing things I've heard before and hearing some new things that I hadn't thought of. And so it's been humbling. And I really appreciate our staff who have made space to hear uncomfortable things and and opened themselves up to some really challenging conversations. So I think it's a great start. It's it's extremely difficult and sensitive for me to talk about racialized injustices. And I have been perhaps too passively asking that we do it for a while and that we plan for what the future would look like. So I'd like to get back to that, and I'm encouraged to hear that folks want to do that. It's it's hard and disheartening to hear that people might not understand why, or that it has value, or that it's something worth, you know, spending some resources on to pay off in the long term for our community's well-being. And so hopefully, this has raised awareness around issues of healing that need to be addressed. I think even just understanding that there are so many people who are Native American who are homeless in our community, for example, is something that I appreciate the honesty and desire to take a hard look at and to see how we can do better and partner with community members to do better. So I think that's probably enough said. I need to listen, keep listening, and and I think we have some work to do. And this feeds into something that I'm really hoping that we're able to do, which is to get together with our our city leadership ourselves, our department heads, and and talk about sort of how we envision moving forward during COVID, during some big transitions for the city, during, you know, financial challenges, and with the the light that has been shown upon us and our community and how we need to do better when it comes to racial equity. So I hope that we can do some kind of safe and socially-distanced team-building, and not just team-building for like, you know, hugging each other and then high-fiving each other and moving on, but really, you know, I think we need some time to kind of rethink our priorities and to become focused together and to ensure that staff really understand what our priorities are, and we understand what staff's limitations and needs are, and move forward together. So I think that's really needed. I know some of you might know what I'm talking about, and some of you might be like, huh? What I'm really talking about is another city strategic planning session, and there's a bit of a proposal being floated right now about that. And so if you are supportive, I think you can reach out to Pam and say that, because there's there's no way for me to get the, to rally the troops on that one, other than saying it here. So I think hopefully we'll be able to do that in the near future, no matter what COVID has in store for us, as far as whether we're able to meet in person or not. So lastly, on a totally different note, I just want to share that this Saturday from nine to 11 is the Trails Summit. The annual Trails Summit is happening, and it's all online. And Senator Mike McGuire will be providing an update, and the Humboldt Trails Council and other local trail advocates will be providing an update about the state of trails in our community. I know that's something that has come up quite a bit with COVID, is the desire to have more walkability, more bikeability, and more safe ways for people to both transport themselves and engage in active recreation. So please look for that. It's a long link on Zoom, so I would just encourage folks who are interested to Google Trails Summit, June 6th, and it'll come right up. And again, it's nine to 11 this Saturday. And it should be a good time and some great information about the progress being made on local trails, especially the Humboldt Bay Trail, but also beyond.
Excellent. Oh, Heidi.
Sorry, I also forgot Friday night markets are being launched this weekend. Also, they're going to be launching restaurants that are involved in different, you know, different artisans that are going to be involved in doing that. So I just wanted to make sure the public knew that. So be looking for that. I believe it's on the 7th, that they're going to publicize that, what will be available.
That's right. Thanks for reminding us about that. And also, this is the time when everybody's like, yay, the report's over, we can end it. But I did forget something, too, that I was so excited about sharing earlier this week. As you know, I'm a big advocate for childcare and the importance of childcare as a tool for economic recovery. We don't have places for parents to take their kids, can't go back to work. But the childcare providers are very, they're essential workers, but it's a really hands-on job that's high-risk. So I was speaking with First Five Humboldt, who really wanted to offer something to childcare providers as an incentive to open their childcare centers again. And working with them and with Humboldt Area Foundation, we managed to find the funding so that every childcare that opens up for services and becomes compliant through the county will be the stipend for doing so. And that was a really big deal. So I'd like to thank Humboldt Area Foundation for coming through and really recognizing the value that our childcare providers play, not just in our lives, which is very important for the development of children, but in our overall economy. So yay!
Yay!
And with that, I will adjourn. Thanks.
Thank you. Bye, everyone.